The first thing that we want to do is public comment. Now, on the agenda, I've laid out some guidelines for public comment, but it's not up to me to decide that. It's really up to the board. I had suggested a limit of two minutes per person, and people do have to come to the podium so people at home can see it. We wouldn't have a second public comment from the same person unless everybody else has had a chance, and the total time for public comment will not exceed forty minutes. So I would look to the board to see if they feel that those guidelines are acceptable or if they want to do something else.
My only comment is, by my count, there's fourteen members of the public. That's twenty-eight minutes total of public comment time. Just that maybe we would offer a little bit of flexibility on the two minutes itself, unless there's an influx of people and we really want to keep it.
Yeah, I mean typically we'll be flexible on it.
Right.
But is there--
Try to honor the spirit of it.
Yeah, exactly. Is there agreement on the board that that'll be all right? Okay. Okay, with that said then, public comment. Anybody who wishes to make public comment would please come up to the podium, and we'll try to keep it to about a two-minute limit or so, knowing that we don't have a huge crowd here tonight. We can be a little flexible with that. But anybody wishing to make public comment at this time?
Bill Freeman on Spear Street here in Rockport. I'm not sure I missed the prelude, Ken, what you just said, that this is on the library issue, obviously.
Right.
I didn't either. I just wanted to just make a comment that seems like we've been here for ten years on this subject. No, we haven't, but five years, anyway. And it seems like we voted on hopefully what you folks are going to address tonight, and that is, again, what the future is going to be of the Rockport Library. It seems like we've had a couple of votes already on where it's going to be located, and to me, it was voted on twice, and I believe I'm correct, at One Lime Rock. And one of the reasons, and I was here for one meeting not too long ago, when the decision was made at about eleven-thirty at night, there was five of us left in the room, and the previous select board had, I guess, four of the five, said that they were making a decision for One Lime Rock because, okay, the idea of trying to place a library on the property at the Rockport Elementary School would be a multi-year process, just to determine, again, what the plan would be. And you'd need input from the town, you'd need input from architecturally, how it would be designed. Just remind you, and the reason I'm coming up here, reminds you that that was one of the biggest parts of the decisions by three or four, no, excuse me, three of you, two of you.
Two of us.
Two, on the board at that time, made that comment over and over again, "Look, we need to, you know, stop renting on Route One, we need to get going on this project," and one of the big things is we need some kind of a comprehensive plan to decide how we're going to use the property at RES, and that's not going to come quickly. So that's the only comment I wanted to make, just remind you of what the previous select board folks, and a couple of you here on this board tonight, had made that decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to make a public comment this evening?
Do you want to comment again?
I guess if nobody else wants to. Hearing none.
Hold that thought.
Hang on. Oh, well, we heard the door.
Oh, okay. Okay, well, we'll move on, and I, this next section of the agenda, I just put down what has been decided so far, so we have a place where we can start from. At our last select board meeting, which was in November, we voted on, this board voted on a total budget of no more than $3 million for a new library, and we also voted that the budget was to be funded by a fifty-fifty mix of public and private funds, meaning taxpayer bond obligations and contributions from private entities.
Is it appropriate for me to interject, or do you want to go through all this stuff?
To point on what you want to interject.
I was just curious, so the budget to be funded fifty-fifty mix, the way that we had done it previously, that got turned down at the ballot box, was that the taxpayer bond would not get released until a certain percentage or the entirety of the private fundraising. Were we anticipating doing that again?
I would assume so. I mean, when we get to writing the bond question, you know, if we do, then we'll deal with that, but I, that's a fairly common way to do it, where, you know, we can't spend the money until we have the money to spend, and then we have to have the private funds, you know, locked down before we can release the budget. We can have a vote, but typically, the vote, the bond money would not be released until the private money was mixed. We also were informed in November that Reed and Associates had withdrawn as a project architect. They were the ones who developed the previous proposal for us, and the other item that has been decided is that the One Lime Rock Street site was selected, and that was a prior select board vote in the spring of 2017. Now, the prior select board does not obligate this board to follow suit, but at this point, that decision has not been reversed or rescinded. So that's where we stand right now. Does anybody have any comments on that section? As I said, I put that in there just to sort of give us the grounding as to where we are.
I just have a comment on A. With regard to the total, I think it ought to be made clear that most generally, there's a contingency fund of a certain percentage that's built into a bid, and so when we say $3 million, your project's probably going to be two-seven or two-eight with that contingency.
Yeah, the budget will include the contingency.
Right.
So that three million would be including--
But you, yeah, you don't get a three million plus whatever overtures--
Right, right, and that's, like I say, that contingency is usually a budget item. It's part of, you know, bricks and mortar is so much, and landscaping is so much, and then a contingency, and that total will not exceed.
And as a related question, if private fundraising raises $2 million, does the bond go down to 1 million?
Well, that's something that we would have to discuss. From my perspective, if our private fundraising is wildly successful, and we raise more than the half of the 3 million, which is one and a half million, then I would advocate strongly that a significant portion of that go toward reducing the taxpayer bond amount. We can pick a percentage at some point. Again, these are details we can work out, but fifty-fifty, I would say, because we don't want to low, if we can offer the taxpayers some relief on this project, I would like to be able to do that. It may also, if, the private fundraising may also be able to perhaps enhance some of the things within any plan that we have, perhaps, just for an example, buy furniture that might last ten years longer than something else, or something of that nature.
But also, the survey said, you know, the town wanted to spend 3 million, not--
Right, right. So that's something I think we could discuss at a later time, but certainly, I do think that a significant portion of any excess private fundraising should be dedicated toward reducing the amount that the town has to borrow, which then reduces the annual payments and keeps our budget down and our taxes down.
Mine might take a little while, so if yours is quick.
Mine was, again, in the prior plan that we had laid out, there was substantial work to the intersection that was separate, but I didn't know for the purposes of going forward with this, are we, is that in any way part of our conversation, or is that going to be something that we'll maybe address further on down? I know it was an MDOT thing. MDOT did want the intersection reorganized, but I just didn't know if it was applicable for what we're dealing with right now.
I think the last thought that I had heard was that we wanted to keep the two projects separate, and actually, the prior plan did not depend on--
Right.
--the intersection reconstruction. And so there was no money in that prior budget for that intersection reconstruction. And I think that's the way we would move forward here as well, because, as you say, it is an MDOT issue. It's a state road, and they would have to weigh in on whatever intersection reconstruction is going to be done, and that timeline of that process may be different than the timeline of our process, and so I think we would be wise to, if we want to pursue that, we can pursue it, but I think it has to be parallel tracks. It might not necessarily come at the same time.
Right, thank you.
Tom?
So my question is really, it's a question of institutional memory, and it would have to be directed to you, or Owen, Rick could probably answer it too, but he's not here.
He is here. He's with us on, he's with us on the phone.
Greetings, Rick. So it's about Point D, which is the selection of the Lime Rock Street site, and the vote that occurred last, was it March or February?
February.
Early this year, yeah. February to choose that site, and we've had a number of conversations in which I've had questions or been critical of that decision. And one of the things that I'm hoping that, that truly I don't know the answer to, that I hope maybe you can shed some light on for me, it has to do with how that decision was reached, and as I, in particularly, particularly in light of, as I go through the materials that were provided to us for this meeting, one of the points on the timeline says that in November 2014, I don't know a page number to give you, because there are no page numbers here, but it's November 2014, if you want to scroll to that.
Oh, okay.
Actually, Ben, you can take over. I can't see it in my mind.
Yep.
No, you gotta, you gotta go to, you're at 2012, so.
Which, what month was it?
Right there. So just keep going, just a little bit.
November, yeah.
Okay. So, and I'm asking this because part of my concern that I've expressed before comes out of what I've heard from people in the community around questions that they have around, basically, a reversal of previous position by the board. So it says, in November 2014, we had a vote. This particular vote was proposed to build a library at the RES site. That vote was defeated, 1065 to 786. Now, it says, the third, it says that Article Nine was recommended by the select board four to one. I don't know if the two of you were among the four who recommended it. It also says later on--
That wasn't on.
--that the select board unanimously recommended the measure pass, but the majority voted against it. So what I would, I'm just asking if you can provide some history. We have clearly in November 2014, the select board supported one site. Then in February of 2017, the select board reversed that position to favor the other site. I think that a lot of people, I don't have a good picture of why and what happened there, and I, it would help me to know.
Okay. Well, let me do my best, because I was on the board at the time, and I guess I'm the only one left standing from that board, and I was one of the four.
Okay.
There were two articles on the ballot that, that election, the library committee at the time had wanted only one, and we, they wanted just one article to propose building a new library at RES, and we had a public meeting where there was a lot of opposition to that for a couple of different reasons, and so the select board at the time decided to split the question into two separate questions. These were non-binding questions. They were advisory questions, thinking that this would give the town the opportunity to say, yes, we wanted a new library, but no, we don't want it at RES, or we, yes, we want a library, yes, we want it at RES, or no to either. So it would give them some potential. At the time, as a select board member, I thought that the question was worded to primarily consider the forming RES site. I thought it was a good idea, and I voted for it. I recommended it, and I voted for it. I also voted for the other article, which asked if we wanted to develop a plan for a new library. Obviously, we know that both questions failed. After that, and I was going to get into this a little bit later, but I might as well do it now, after that, when deciding how to move forward, we brought in an engineering firm to look at the One Lime Rock building, and they looked at that building and determined that there were some fairly serious safety issues with the building for both patrons and employees, including the fact that Ben could have fallen through the floor of his office and onto the floor below, that the small second floor there was not structurally sound to support what was going on up there, both office work from Ben and also a lot of storage, and there were some other issues with the building as well. And that's when the select board decided to move out of that building and move to the temporary location. Now, moving forward to the development of the ad hoc library committee and the planning for the one, the building that failed at the One Lime Rock site. At that point, I like to listen to the voters. I really do. And we had made a decision to, based on the vote here, which was defeating the RES site from the voters, that changed my mind, because it told me what the voters wanted to see. Now, when we decided then to put forth a plan for a new library, we got some kickback from some people saying, hey, wait a minute, how can you ignore, you know, pay attention to one question and ignore the other one? Basically, both questions had no new library and not at RES. So how can we then go ahead with the library and ignore that question, but then, but then use the RES vote to justify going to One Lime Rock? And my rationale at the time, and I can't speak for the other board members who were here, but my rationale at the time is we had new information that we did not have for the vote on the library question, not the RES question. In other words, that the building was not structurally sound, it couldn't, and the engineers told us that remediating that building would cost an awful lot of money and probably wouldn't be money well spent, and things of that nature. So I was comfortable going forward with planning for a new library despite the negative vote on that question. At the same time, and people did come forward and say, well, wait a minute, now, if you're going to reverse on that question, and again, they were both advisor questions, if you reverse on that question, you have to, you should entertain reversing on the other question as well. And I stated to the public, and in fact, that was at the end of my first term and the beginning of my second term, and one of my election, you will, was, I said, I told people, I said, "We have new information on the status of the building," which led us to go in a different direction, in other words, going ahead with the new library despite that negative vote. And I asked people, I said, "Anybody who voted for, voted against the RES site, if you have now changed your mind, please come and tell me." Because I was willing to say, okay, we've had a change in circumstances here, maybe there's a change in circumstances with the site selection too. And if that, if there had been that sort of response, then I would have been more inclined to look at the RES site again, but there wasn't. And in spite of asking at many public meetings, asking people, please, if you're out there and you voted against the RES site, but you've changed your mind, please let me know. And asking that many times, I never heard from anybody. So I drew the conclusion that the opinion of the populace of the voters had not changed on that issue. And so that's my rationale. Like I said, I can't speak for the rest of the board. That was my rationale in going forward and supporting the project that we then put forth for the One Lime Rock site, the $4 million building. I don't know whether that answers your question or--
That helps a lot. I, and I recognize that I've, by asking that question, it puts you on the spot. I was the only person here on the board who can speak to that, and I have absolutely no doubt that you, throughout that entire process, did it thoughtfully and with really good intention to bring out the best result. So that does help me understand the thinking.
Can I add one thing on to that? Because I didn't come on until six months later, but one of the things that was interesting about this vote, because, you know, you don't like to, sometimes, basically, a decision that is made, One Lime Rock, all of a sudden, that decision gets wiped away when the citizenry rejects it. Why did we, why have we kept on with One Lime Rock after our previous failed vote? Well, I think that one of the things that weighed pretty heavily was just the number differential in the votes. So the one that we had recently was nine votes differential, basically a statistical tie, whereas this one, I believe that they, they saw the, the number differential being much greater in this case as a clear sign that maybe RES is not the site that they want to primarily consider. Speculating, but that was kind of the feel that I got when I came on to the board, that the resounding nature of that vote weighed heavily, kind of above and beyond just the fact that the vote failed. It failed by a substantial margin.
I can understand why that would be some, that would be a natural thought to have.
Whereas with this last one, we still, I mean, it's--
Anything further on this, the what has been decided section here? And Ann and Ben, Ann is the chair of the library committee, for anybody out there who doesn't know, and most people do, and Ben is our library director. If you guys want to chime in at any point, please feel free to do so. Particularly on this next item, which is how to move forward, and that's the role of the select board and the library committee. Previously, we had an ad hoc library planning committee that did all the work with the architects and worked with Ben and with the library committee in developing the proposal that we put before the voters, the one that missed by just nine votes. This is a board discussion, but I'll indicate my thoughts. My thoughts this time around are that we're going to ride on the shoulders of that prior committee to a certain extent, because they've done a lot of work, so has the library committee, so has Ben. So the select board, I think, in this next iteration will have a larger role, and my thought is that the select board representing the town owns the building. And so I think, my opinion now, and I'll look for the rest of the board to chime in, but my opinion is that it's up to us to decide, to select an architect, and to go forward and produce the building. Once we've done that, then the library committee that's involved with Ben in developing policies and how the library runs will be responsible for helping to craft the interior design and then the use of space and how resources are going to be allocated within the building. That's my general thought, and I would, again, look to the rest of the board to tell me I'm wrong or to tell me--
Are you comfortable with that?
Go ahead. You can go first.
I think, really based on the experiences that Ben and the library committee have had through the ad hoc library planning committee, through working with Reed and Company, I think our role and his role are going to be very much intertwined with, you know, the architectural development and making sure that the program space is what's necessary, what's needed, that will fit in, you know, our $3 million budget, that kind of thing. But I think, you know, the select board, I think they do have a pretty strong responsibility at this point in taking that on their shoulders, so I think it's a good, I think it's a good partnership.
Yeah, I think, Ken, I think you summed it up real well, that the select board has, you know, ownership of the building, where it's located, but once you get inside the walls, we need people who know what they're doing with the programs to give us advice. And in fact, my sister-in-law, who's a librarian, head librarian out in Portland, Oregon, wrote me today with her comments on the whole issue, and then she does point out, she says, whatever role the select board plays, you still must capitalize, have professional library staff input. Leaving them out will negatively impact your results. So I see this as a partnership with each of us having our roles to play.
Ben, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
You mentioned not too long ago in a meeting, when you were up at the podium--
Yep.
--that one of the things you felt strongly about was having a one-floor facility. Is that something that you feel comfortable commenting on, a little, the reasoning for that, or is that, is premature for you to do more?
Well, no, no, I, so the reason that I, that I've been pushing for one floor, and I can be swayed really easily on that, the reason I was going for one floor is because that's the way for me to get the most bang for my buck that I can think of. I'm not an architect, though.
Like in terms of--
You know, like, no elevators, no stairwells, things like that. You know, I could easily be shown, hey, you can still get everything you want, we can put these in here, have two floors, it'll be fine, and I'll go, okay, look, it'll be fine. You know, I'm not an architect by any means. I have learned that a million times over in the last two years, going through the process. So while one floor is the way I see it done, if we can get everything we need in two floors, which we can, or one floor, I think, it's fine with me. Whatever, whatever works best for the flow of the building is what I'm looking for.
Can I ask a follow-on question?
Yeah.
And it's primarily because of elevator space, elevator motor, the stairwells, proper aggression, and has a lot more to do with that than it does the staff requirements for two floors?
Oh, yeah, no, no.
Okay.
Yeah, staff, I'm, we're fine with that. We can easily do two floors. The last plan was two floors. It was just, I was asked at one point to sort of come with a plan on how to reduce the size, and, and I was like, well, get rid of this stuff that is not part of the library program, which, you know, I can't put books in stairwells, I can't put books in, in elevators, I can't put people in those places the same way other things are done. And then I just wanted to jump in and comment if I could, like, after going through this process before, the way that it was done, a lot of times, was Reed would send me drafts, I would workshop it with Reed, I'd ask the staff for some input on flow and things to set the interior of the building, and then it would sort of go back out to the ad hoc library committee at the end of those phases. But when it came, but that all dictated what the outside of the building really ended up looking like. So it was setting the interior design first and then the exterior. And once the interior was set, which was, in the last process, easier than everything else, nobody really blinked an eye at it.
Well, and some of that may have been how Reed worked. I don't know. Like, you're not an architect, I'm not an architect either. I do think we need to let the architects do their work. We'll give them guidelines, of course, and I think, and I sat up here and I said, well, the select board is going to do the building, and you guys are going to do the inside, but I really see this as a partnership between the select board and the library committee. I think we both have to be intimately involved with, with the processes we go through, because that's going to provide the best result for the town and for the townspeople. Okay.
I just wanted to mention, if I could, a couple of things that, some of the things that we sort of know. And I just want to remind people that in 2015, in August of 2015, we had an engineering conceptual assessment by Gartley and Dorsky outlining permissible lot coverage, and along with that, a new construction conceptual layout on the current site, which came to approximately 7,000 square feet. So I just wanted to let you know that part had already been done. Additionally, a geoengineering report on the Lime Rock site by Summit Engineering Services on February 16 was provided, which included borings and probes on both sites as part of the ad hoc library committee, for those of you who weren't involved with that.
Just to be clear, both sites is Memorial Park--
Thank you, yes. So I think those, you know, having already have those done, you know, we are continuing to look for ways that we can save the town money, so that's, I think, I look at those as positives. The other thing, and this is in reference to what Ben mentioned, we talked about ways that we could maximize space, get the programming that we needed, and so that on January 23, the library committee voted to recommend a library program of an estimated 7,535 feet of functional square feet, and that doesn't include unassignable spaces, you know, along with the comment that Ben wanted a, you know, kind of a one-floor structure. So, you know, those are some of the things that we wanted to keep in mind, and then, you know, things that we want to fully consider as we go through and have these conversations is even though we're taking out the, or thinking about taking out the, and separating the driving area, you know, the, I get, I don't know what you call it, the circle or whatever.
Intersection.
Intersection, thank you. We do need to keep in mind that parking is still an issue, and that we want to make sure that we have at least an intermediate parking solution that will work, you know, when we, when we build a library. So I think those are some considerations that, that we need to think about, so just wanted to mention that.
The next item I had on here was discussion regarding site, and we've already kind of touched on that. I had written down some notes to myself, some of which I went through in the answer to Tom's question earlier, and wanted to talk about, going on and skipping some of the stuff I had written down earlier, because I mentioned it for Tom. But earlier this year, we had a panel of experts in the board at that time to take a fresh look at both the RES site and the One Lime Rock site, to determine feasibility and practicality of building a library at each site. And for me, I had several takeaways from that exercise. First, according to the contractors, and I see one of them in the back row, we were told that it was, it would be possible to build a library on either site. Each site had their shortcomings, but none of those shortcomings were major hurdles. That was my takeaway from that. Second, the plant, the planners that were there, the city-town planners, urban planners, told us that because the RES site was larger than needed for a library, it would be wise to master plan the development of that entire site to best decide how to place a library there, if, if we decided to go there with a library. And then the planners also told us that there was value in keeping the library in the downtown village for development purposes and for some other development patterns and some other reasons. At the conclusion of that, those sessions, I voted to continue to pursue the One Lime Rock site. It's just me now. I was on the board at the time. I didn't agree with everything the planners said to us in those sessions. I have to say that-- But when considering possible uses of both town-owned sites, I came to the decision that it was in the best interest of the town to use the One Lime Rock site for the library and eventually to create a master plan for the RES site, to develop that as a town-owned site as well, perhaps for something else. And I do have to tell you that that was not an easy decision. Some people may get the idea that, you know, that we make these decisions lightly. It was not an easy decision for me. I walked into that last meeting that night not knowing how I was going to vote. It was a very close call for me. So. After that, we, the board decided to undertake a market research project, which was a survey we just did. You know, a lot of people after the last vote failed, told us why it failed. I had a lot of input from citizens after that, but unfortunately, they all told us different things. So we weren't really sure about that. And I didn't really want to make assumptions about why that proposal didn't pass. I wanted to have something to go on, which is why I supported doing the survey. Most heartening result from the survey, for me, and the most important, 74% of the people in town thought the Rockport Public Library was an important part of our community. That energizes me. It makes me think that maybe all the difficult times we've had over the last couple of years are worthwhile, and we're going to, we're going to move forward and do something that most of the town wants. Survey also told us maximum project cost would be three million and the maximum public portion would be about half of that. And the survey also told us the town was about as evenly divided as possible on the site question. No matter how Bruce manipulated the data, it came out, as, as he said, stood up here at this podium and said remarkably, he said he had never seen anything like it before, where the question was so evenly divided. And so for that, for me, that meant that the survey didn't push us to change our prior decision. It didn't push us in the direction of the RES site. And I was ready. I was willing. I told several people, some RES supporters included, I said, if this survey tells us to go there, if we had a, if we had a clear result that said the majority of the people prefer that RES site, I'd be sitting up here tonight telling you to go in that direction or suggesting we go in that direction. It didn't. It's a, it's a 50-50 shot. We can't compromise on the site. We have to, to make a decision. And so at this point, I'm going to support developing a new plan on the One Lime Rock site. And again, my decision is based on what I think are the best interests of the town. Doesn't matter what I think personally. In fact, I don't really have a strong opinion one way or the other on the site. That doesn't matter anyway. My decision, based on what I think are the best interests of the town, what I think the citizens want and will support, as best as I can determine that, I'm doing the best I can up here. So. I will stop there with my diatribe on the site and let others weigh in.
I'll weigh in my thoughts on the process that we went through the previous board, where we were kind of doing RES, One Lime Rock, side-by-side comparison. Because that seems to be, you know, one of the, one of the issues that, that, you know, pro-RES site folks have had is that the process we went through wasn't robust enough. That we didn't do the kind of all aspects evaluation, we didn't have numbers assigned to different things, we didn't have pictorial representations or kind of a, a fully fleshed-out site plan for the RES like we had had for the One Lime Rock. And I can totally respect that because, you know, there's all kinds of different processes you can go through. You can go through quick processes that you do in your brain in half a second. Or you could take an entire year and work up two separate site plans and, and really be able to understand these two sites in depth and in detail. The kind of counterpoint to that is, well, how much time and how much money do we want to put into this process? And though I can recognize that there were some flaws in that process, primarily the extent to which we put resources into developing site plans. But I, I really felt that we did a decent job of trying to ask similar questions of both sites, really wanted to get, is there differentiating factors? There's something about One Lime Rock that makes it ungodly difficult to build on, and the same with RES. And it was interesting, you know, I was, I was trying to be cognizant and aware of that. And so where we would ask about ledge at One Lime Rock, I wanted to make sure we talked about groundwater at RES. When we talked about staging difficulties at One Lime Rock and how it would be for the, the construction firm and where they would stage their materials, you know, how does that look at RES? And so even though it was not a entirely intensive and completely comprehensive evaluation of the two sites, I do think that we did a, a pretty good job. I felt like I had a, a solid understanding from a lot of, you know, professionals in town with diverse experiences that kind of guided us through this process. And it did seem like the sites were both awash. Benefits on both, difficulties on both, kind of getting down to that bottom dollar question, which one's going to be cheaper to build on? And kind of was the same thing how everything has been with this process, kind of evenly spill it, you know? This one offers this opportunity, but this one offers that one. So that's what I've heard the most of, that the, the process that we had gone through to kind of reach that determination in our One Lime Rock vote was flawed. And I can respect that. But I, I feel that the amount of time that we put on it, it was not a, a negligent amount of time. We, we really did, I mean, jeez, how many meetings did we?
Three, three long meetings.
Specific to evaluating both sites. So thank you for, for everyone that, you know, has recognized that that process could have been better. But almost anything can be better. It just depends on how much time, energy, and money you want to put into making it better. And with us wanting to move the process forward, it felt like we had gathered enough information to make a good decision, and off we went.
I, I respect the, the vote that you guys made in February with the information you had at the time for One Lime Rock. Since then, there's been a, a good learning curve and the survey was very helpful. And in keeping this short-winded, I also am going to be leaning to the One Lime Rock.
So my perspective is not so much about the location at, at this point. My location is, my perspective is how, I don't think that there's any, any disagreement that this issue's become really contentious in the community. And I think that it's contentious because it's a hard issue. And I think that everybody, I re, I really do think that everybody has done their best to try to find their way through a, a difficult issue. I know certainly that you have, Ken. I know that past members of this board have, and you as well, Owen. I can understand why, after, you told me about, I asked you that question a little while ago, you told me that the defeat of the referendum in 24, the non-binding referendum led you to think, okay, there's more support for one location than the other, and that changed your mind. And I think it's understandable why it, it did. Subsequent to that, we have information from the survey that would lead us to believe that it's, it's, it's so close that it's, it's almost impossible to call. It's a, it's almost a tie. And my fear, honestly, my fear is that the location will be enough to defeat a referendum. Again, no matter which one it is. And my worry is that we'll put something on the ballot. If we approach this on the ballot the way we have, by making it a yes or no question on one location or the other, that could get it defeated. I know that we certainly did identify that the cost was a major factor, and we've addressed that. And I think that we have a lot of agreement about that being the appropriate choice. But I do think that we risk if we stick to, if we stick to the previous decision, that picks the spot for the town when the town doesn't have its mind made up. We risk having it be defeated, and then we've lost a whole year. So what that leads me to is how could we approach it differently? And I know that it's, and I, I've suggested this before, at the, when I previously suggested it, it was somewhat thinking out loud, but it's not thinking out loud at this point. I think we have a really unconventional situation. And that unconventional situation probably needs a different solution to enable the town to feel like the result was completely aboveboard and legitimate. And I, I'd suggest three choices on the ballot. I, I would suggest a choice for one location, a choice for the other location, and a choice for neither of the above. I think that that will be the, that will be the best way to make sure we get an approval for a library project at either place. And that will also, Ken, you've, I think you've said before that, you know, what's tricky about that is that we could end up with a result that doesn't have a majority. And that, that is tricky. But I think that we would be prepared to honor any of those results, even if it won by a razor-thin margin, and move forward. Now, to do that, we would have to commit to expending the resources to develop proposed site plans for both locations. If we did that, it would be an expenditure of resources. It would also, however, perhaps be resources well-spent in that it would help anyone in the town who feels that due diligence was not done. It would be doing that due diligence. Again, I just want to, and I'll close with this. I'm really trying to commit this from the angle of how do we help the town move forward in the most positive way and get the result of a library as expeditiously as we can? I, I just think that that's our best path to success. And I will support the library no matter where it's put.
And I appreciate what you're saying, but by the time we do all these extended surveys and, and what can we put on the RES site to complement the library, there'll be none of us on the board because it'll take a couple of years. And then the current board that's there doesn't have to adhere to what we were doing. They can do whatever they want to do. So we have to.
Is that the case? We couldn't do that by June? We couldn't get an architect to do site plans for, for two sites in time to have the public see them and then?
Because it was something that we talked about when we got onto the RES, when we went through our flawed process, we, we talked about the RES. And one of the interesting things was is we realized the potential of that site. That is a very high potential site. And so one of the things that kind of came out of that was if we were to place a library there, it would be prudent to have a entire site plan for the, the whole of the property to figure out where is the best place to put that, based on what it is you want to do with that parcel of land going into the future. And so to get to that point where you identify what we want to do with it in the future and where that library would integrate into that, that's where it becomes a much longer process than simply we're trying to work up, we, we know exactly where the library's going to go, and now we just need to tweak what we had at One Lime Rock to be site-specific for this one. That's where it was kind of like, oh, that really does make sense that if you plop it down in the middle of it, because it, it makes sense there, that doesn't make sense for the entire site as a whole. And that, that was something that I found to be pretty interesting and actually did change my mindset a little bit about how long it would take us to go through that process that you're describing, as awesome as the process is.
And it's not just the architectural design for the property. It's, as Owen had said twice now, it, it's what do you, what are the bigger plans for the rest of the property? You know, you'd want to place your library in a place appropriate, and then what about the rest of the property adjoining it? What can we make it into to make it attractive? And it would take, I think, a fair amount of time.
I'd like to make sort of two points. And the first is, I think Tom raises a very interesting question. And it is, if tonight or when tonight, we make a decision on the site, are many of the involved parties going to fall in and support that? That decision and move forward with a positive attitude? Or are we still going to have a lot of people in the community working to torpedo the decision and get us to backtrack on it? I personally am willing to take the chance of a defeat at the polls because that's what our democracy is always about. I would certainly hope it wouldn't happen. But I feel that if we make a decision on a site, and I think if the Library Committee can live with it, the Select Board's happy with it, and we go out and we sell the project to the town as this is really the best effort that we can give it, I believe that we will be able to do the fundraising, and I think we'll be able to also get the vote that we want at the ballot box. But like I say, I can live with the negative vote too, if that happens. I mean, that's the way it is. My second point does have to do with on the site here because we've each been expressing our opinions. And even before I was elected on the Select Board and took an interest in this, I had a, a personal bias on the location of the site. Just again, for my own personal reasons, my vision of the village and everything for the One Lime Rock Street. But I guess what solidified my opinion really was the objective information that we received subsequently. And I've sort of harped on this at previous meetings, but you know, once again, we had the panel of the three independent planners, and whether you agreed with everything they said or not, I think each one of them felt that it was in the town's best interest to have the location at One Lime Rock Street. Also, our town manager, as he points out in his comments, which is available to the public, he also felt that the One Lime Rock Street was preferable, as did our town planner. Again, another professional. And then finally, I respect the process that the previous Select Board went through when they made their February vote four to one. So, you know, again, besides my own personal opinion, I think there's lots of objective information that I would support the, the One Lime Rock Street location.
I want to address Tom's idea of a, of a three-pronged vote question, and Tom and I have talked about that, and he knows my feeling on that. I think I'm concerned that, that the winner, so to speak, would not have a majority vote in that situation. Basically, that means that a majority of people would not have been in favor of the optionally passed. But I also have come to learn that it may be a problem for bond counsel. In other words, if we're going on a question and asking side or the other less than 50%, that that may be a problem. We may not be able to, to deal with the bonds that way. So if we did a two-pronged or three-pronged question, however you want to put it, we might end up then having to vote again later on in order to approve the bonds. Because I don't think that the bond bank will allow us to, to have a vote where we don't have a 50% yes-no choice.
Did we check in with legal counsel on that? Ricky?
Wake up.
So I have a follow-up question.
Margarita.
This was another, an option that I wonder about. I wonder if it's possible on the ballot to have two questions. One, a binding one, and maybe one, a non-binding one.
Did we check in with legal counsel on that?
There's a little bit of a delay there.
Oh, yeah, there is a delay. I, I was just wondering, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Can hear you great.
Okay. Yeah, that's, that's, there's two problems with the multiple-choice thing. You know, a multiple choice with a binding, a binding question is really difficult. And counsel always advises against that. It's marginally okay to get an advisory position on something, but to move forward with any kind of binding referendum, it's, it's difficult. But then when you add the bond piece to it as well, it makes it, I, I can't imagine that bond counsel would ever agree to language that would allow us to have a multiple-choice bond question.
Okay, so I have a subsequent question then, which is, could we, could we do two questions, one binding and one non-binding? The first one, a binding one, would be to approve the construction of a library with the, the budget we've selected. The second one, the non-binding one, would be on the site. And that we would go, we, we then, as a Select Board, would be empowered to instantly make a decision on the site. And we could commit to honoring whatever came out ahead in that non-binding vote. And I would feel, I would fully support either location that came out ahead in such an instance. But what that would allow us to do is to it would allow us and it would compel us to do the full faith, like, look at both sites with a site plan, a proposed site plan that the public could be informed about. There is a concern among public could be informed about. There is a concern among some people that, that, that was not done in the way that it should have been. And I hope that I am saying this in a way that does not throw anybody here under the bus. I don't want to do that. I truly think everybody acted in good faith. But I also don't want anybody, including myself, to be prone to criticism and potentially vicious rumor-mongering that there wasn't good faith. And that is something that we have been liable to, folks up here have been liable to, have been susceptible to. And it's part of what I would like us to, to think about in moving forward, to be very healthy and transparent in that way, which I think is everybody's intention.
Anybody else want to chime in there? Well, I'll chime in and my fear with a scenario like that is that we'll get the result just as the survey predicted, which is that the site question will be split just about 50/50. And I think that becomes difficult from a fundraising point of view for private funding to, because private funders want to fund something that the town is really behind.
But one of the options is going to have at least one more vote than the other.
Yeah, but that's, that's-
Even if it's close to 50/50.
It, it, that's, that's true, although, I mean, stranger things have happened in this process. It could have been a dead tie, I suppose. But at any, but I think still that, that private funders are going to be more willing to fund something that gets a robust approval. My thought is, I think that what we need to do as a select board is to put forth the best proposal that we can, that we think has a reasonable chance of passing, and is in the best interest of the town. We did that before with the proposal, I felt. I felt good about that prior proposal. It almost passed. It almost passed. It didn't just miss by a razor thin margin.
Even if it had passed, it wouldn't have been a robust approval.
That's right. It wouldn't have been. But we found that, let me finish, because we found by doing the survey, we found that the number one reason it didn't pass was cost. If we fix that, and I'll be honest, you know, we've got to hit it out of the park with a design for a new library, no matter where it is, because we have to convert some people. Wherever we go, we're going to have to convert some people from, from their strong feelings about one site to acceptance of another site. And we won't convert everybody. We just won't. But I'd like to think that if we go through this process, that we can choose a site and design a library that appeals to people more than the previous design did, serves the needs of, of the library committee and, and the library community, I mean to say, and, and the community as a whole. And people look at it and say, yeah, that, that's good. I can do that. And I think your point at, at the last meeting too about expandability is key, because I think no matter where we design, we're going to have to ask an architect to, to think about, well, what's going to happen in, in 10, 15 years when we think we might need to expand? So I think it's incumbent on this board to come up with a, a proposal that we can stand behind, that will change people's minds if we have to. And we are going to have to change some people, because the survey told us there's 14% that don't want a library at all. And then each site had a 19% number. So you're starting off right there with 33% of negative votes. And now that, that goes into saying, okay, now we've got to convince people. There may be some people who don't like the design or whatever. So we don't have a lot of room for error. So we really have to hit it out of the park with the design. And we have to be able to change some people's minds and say, you know what? I really wanted it at this site, but boy, this is a nice design. It looks good for Rockport. It's going to fit in well with Rockport, and, and I'm willing to move forward with that.
And that's where it gets back to when and if we make the decision, we as a library committee select board are going to have to show leadership in moving that process forward and getting the support that we need from people. But I think we can do that if we work together.
Can I make a comment or two?
Absolutely.
Yeah. So I, I want to, I want to applaud you, because what I think you're trying to do, Tom, is really look at, at the unconventional situation we've been in and try to find a pathway forward. And I think that's amazing. What I have been saying to myself, and, and this is one of the best communities I have ever been in to be a librarian. I want to say that flat out. This place is awesome. But it's, some days, it's very hard when the conversation about a new library is not about a new library. It's about a location. And I think one of the unconventional things we can start saying is library, not location. You know, this, this should at its heart be about the best library, the best services we can provide to the community. Yes, we could do that at either one. Everybody's opinions for the reasons they want them at both places are absolutely right, which is the problem. I mean, it is. They're, they're, they both have pros and cons. Everybody's right here. But we need to sort of move past that and look at the reason that a library is important and the reason that we're doing this. And the location matters, sure, I guess, but it's what we do that matters. And I don't know how to move the community on that. I don't know how to move one side or the other on that. But that's the thing I've been trying to say to people over and over and over again, that it's about what we do. It's not about where we do it. And I don't, I mean, I don't know, I don't know how we're going to do that. I mean, maybe it's everybody up just being really excited and passionate about this project can, can move it enough. I don't know if that's the answer or not. But again, like, this is all, this, some days it's difficult when the conversation is about location and not services and not the library. So just something to think about.
I love it. I already wrote it down. Library, not location.
I mean, the location matters, and, and that's undeniable. You know, it matters. It matters in a lot of ways, but I think we can build a beautiful library anywhere we do it.
Well, so I appreciate your comments.
Yeah.
One of the things I strongly believe is that in government, the process is the product. And I, I would ask everyone to consider that, whether the, I, I will try to use objective terms when I describe the process that has brought us to this point today. I won't say that it's good or bad or, or whatever. I will say it has not been successful at getting us a library. And it has not been successful at maximizing that excitement. And I hear what you're saying, Ken. I understand your concerns. But what you're saying does not fundamentally change the process that's gone on for several years. And I don't think it's been a dishonorable process. I think it's been an unsuccessful process. And I want it to be successful, to get to the point that, that you're talking about. So that's why I'm really thinking about how do we try something unconventional to match this unconventional, difficult situation.
Could throw something out there? Oh, you, you had something to say?
We've yacked long enough. Is there anybody out here that might want to pipe up and give us a break? I mean, quite frankly, I'm sure-
If anybody wants to make public comment at this point, and raptured by listening to us, I guess we can keep going on and on.
Sure, there's opinions, and maybe we can then expound on some of the stuff we Please come up to the podium if you're going to speak.
One of the things, I'm Bonnie Gibbons, and I live in Rockport. I'm a voter here. One, I'm listening to what you're saying. And one of the things you said is we haven't had a site plan or an architectural design for the RES site. But in fact, that was the first design we ever had. We've actually seen a library designed by an architect on that site with parking. And that is in fact what got voted down by the largest margin.
No, I'm sorry. That never went to vote. That design on the RES site never went to vote. It was just-
Well, there wasn't a picture of it.
There was a, there was a picture. It was just a presentation in a public setting to, it was about the possibility. But there was no vote on that plan.
It was my understanding, maybe I misunderstood, that when that question went on the ballot, it was referring to that design and that building.
Anne is correct. That, the question on the ballot was only about the site. There was no plan attached to it.
We did have a plan that we could look at, and we could see what something looked like on that site.
That's right. And, and, but-
It wasn't, they weren't tied together.
And the only other comment I wanted to make was, I've been at most of the meetings, and I appreciate what everybody's going through and how difficult it is. But I do remember one meeting when, I didn't get up. I rarely get up, but several people got up and said, please, just make a decision. We need you to take charge, make a decision, and then get behind it, and then make everybody positive about what you design. And I agree that we just need a design that will knock everybody out of the ballpark, wherever it is. And we just need to make sure we get a library. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
David Barry, Rockport. In my view, nobody really has considered the financial impact of what happens to the site that we don't pick. Now, I'm not a real estate man, nor am I, nor am I a developer. But it seems quite obvious to me that the revenue the town would get from selling One Lime Rock Street, given they would have to pay a lot of money in lawyer's fees to get the, to get the deed reversed, and it would take a long time, would be an awful lot less than the money we would get for the RES site, and hence reduce the taxes which keep going up. Thank you.
Thank you.
I wonder, Ken, if we should consider moving the question. I mean, I, you know-
Can I say my one last thing? And it, it piggybacks on what Bonnie said and what other people are saying, and it does kind of get to Tom's question. Now, I wasn't on the board for all the iterations of this. But the time period that I was on, and we were discussing the library, our mindset was very much in the, and correct me if I'm wrong, but it seemed like our mindset was very much in the, how can we figure out what the citizens want, go through a deliberative process? It was very citizen-based. It was, how do you get buy-in? How do we figure out what is, they want us to do? You know, how can we get as much citizen input to guide this process to be successful? And that's what we attempted to do in the, the last iteration that got shot down. So what almost seemed like an unconventional thing at the time to do was for the select board to step up and say, hey, you know what? We're pretty much evenly split. Instead of trying to basically get these two parties to come to the mediation table and, and resolve it, and everyone goes home singing kumbaya, and we know exactly what site we want, that seemed somewhat unrealistic based on all the time that we had put into it, that the unconventional thing was grab the bull by the horns, do an evaluation, you know, figure out, the select board makes a decision that it will be this site, and then the citizens shoot us down. Or the citizens pass it. But that, that, at that time, seemed to be the unconventional thing, was for us to step up and assume a far more of a leadership role in conjunction with all the great work that, that the library committee and the building committee was doing. So I just wanted to, because you kept saying, you know, the unconventional thinking, and having been through it, us assuming a greater leadership role seemed to be the unconventional thing to do.
Well, I'm certainly not advocating that we not exercise that leadership role. I am concerned, there was recently an op-ed, and it was either Penn Bay Pilot or Village Ship. I can't remember which. It was about another issue going on in the community. And in this op-ed with which I agreed, the, the part of it that I'm going to speak about, I thought resonated. In general, in elections, particularly local elections, I think often people don't start to pay attention until a month before the election. And I think that we saw that in both of these votes. And the divisive nature of the location on this is enough to rally one side or the other, to come out in some numbers to influence the election. And that's what I am, I'm hoping to avoid. So were this situation different? Were we were getting back results from that survey that said we had a significantly greater spread for one location or the other? I wouldn't be saying we should go in the direction of a three-pronged vote or the, the two-tiered vote, which I mentioned subsequently to that. But that's not where we are. And I'm just worried that we'll be unsuccessful again. So I, I, I understand, and I, I don't want to prolong the discussion. I think there's probably a clear sense among a number of board members about how they'd like to proceed, and I, I can understand that. But I think it's, I just have a different perspective, and it's my, I would be failing to do my job if I didn't articulate that perspective.
Absolutely.
Bill Freeman again with Spear Street. Just a quick question. Have we kept a tally on the amount of money which the town has spent for the last five years on this project? Do we know?
We could probably come up with it. I mean, there's architects' fees, there's survey fees, there's the temporary library situation. So it's, it's significant. And, and again, that could be ongoing too, until we get it settled and get where we're going.
That's my next question. What do we, what are the taxpayers paying a year now for the rental on Route One?
I think, Rick, you can chime in. I think it's $30,000 a year.
$35,000 a year.
Yeah.
And this is our second year?
Yeah, we're going in, haven't completed two years yet, but we're-
So we're at $70,000 now?
We will be by next December.
And each year, we add another $35,000 of taxes.
But you do have to prorate that a little bit, because some of the resources that are going to that building are not going into the One Lime Rock. So I'm not saying that it's a complete wash, but the, the phone, the, you know, the heating's down at minimal at One Lime Rock. So it's not the-
You're saying the $35,000 includes the telephone and so forth?
No.
Oh, right.
Right?
Sorry, there's a little bit of a delay on the, on this, so it makes it difficult. It's about, it's, it's just about $35,000 a year.
For the rental?
That's the rent.
Yeah, and I stood corrected.
I'm just saying, we urge the select board, make a decision, because each year, we just keep, the taxpayers, $35,000, $35,000, we just keep going. And you've got to stop, you've got to make a decision. You're the select board.
I want to make one.
Ben wanted.
Oh, Ben, did you?
Yeah, no, I just, I wanted to, I guess, step back just a second too, as far as the, the roles of the select board and the library committee. The last time around, it seemed like the select board wasn't really going out and campaigning for the library in a, in a way that, that I could see.
You mean prior to the last vote?
Prior to the last vote, yeah.
In 2016.
In 2016, yeah, that we missed by nine. You know, we at the library committee and the ad hoc library committee, we were pushing as hard as we could. We were going to as many events as we could. We were tabling. I was in people's homes. People were throwing parties, like little coffee things where I would just go there and answer questions. You know, we were working as hard as we could to, to sway as many people and answer as many questions as we could. And I, I don't know if I saw that from everybody on the select board the last time around. And I think if you campaign with us and we're all really excited, we'll have a much better shot. So just when it comes to the roles of what everybody's going to do, you know, that last month is going to be long hours talking to people forever.
I think you're right. I think the, the last board didn't do as much as it could. I know I did go to at least one event with you, and, and, and other board members did. But the effort could have been better. I, I don't question that. And I want to speak, and then perhaps we can have a motion, but I want to speak to Tom's concern about process, because I'm the first to admit that the processes, processes that have got us here have been imperfect. We're imperfect people. I'm an imperfect select board member. But that imperfection goes back quite a ways. It goes back to the, to the grant where we had the 14,000 square foot library, perhaps if we had done that. And we can go back in 2020 hindsight, a lot of this stuff, and maybe things would have turned out differently. All I can say is that as we've gone through the process, from my point of view, at each, at each step, I think we've done the best that we could, and I think everybody's gone in it with good intentions. It's been perfect. No, it hasn't been perfect at all. The process continues, and I'm hoping that the process culminates in a success. And I, I think we have a good chance to do that with, with the town coming together on a really robust design. I shouldn't say robust, but a, a wonderful design that people can get behind. They like the exterior appearance. The survey told us that's important. We have to have adequate parking. We have to have the services as, as we need them for the library. So I'll, I'll close with that.
Can I make a motion?
The floor is yours.
I make a motion that the current select board reaffirms and independently supports the February 2017 select board vote designating One Lime Rock Street as the site of the future Rockport Library.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor of the motion? All opposed? Okay, we will call the roll because it's not a unanimous vote. Mark Kelly?
Yes, One Lime Rock.
Tom Gray?
Nope.
Owen?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Yes.
Doug? Yes, and the chair votes yes as well. So that motion passes four to one. Next on the agenda, we have to determine a procedure to select a new architect for the project. We have some information from the manager and his suggestion, and actually, one thing I should have included in what has been decided, we did decide in a prior vote to reach out to the architects who were in the finals of the last RFQ from the ad hoc library planning committee, of which there were six total. One was Reed, so Reed has withdrawn, so that left five, and of those five, four have expressed interest in the project. The manager has provided us with links to the video of their interviews in the previous iteration. I haven't had a chance to go through all those yet, but his suggestion, as, yeah, they're long, it's about six hours worth of video there. His suggestion is that we, one possible process would be to look through those interviews and then make a selection based on that, rather than ask them to come in for new interviews. Remember, this was not necessarily a process to have them design a library, but it was a request for qualifications, and the committee vetted those qualifications of those architects very thoroughly at the time. And so whether we need to reinvent the wheel on asking them to do that over again, I don't know, but particularly where we have the video of the interviews that we can look at. So, I would suggest that, in our last meeting, we scoped out a time to have a subsequent meeting to this one, which would be next Monday. I would suggest that we possibly, each board member could have a chance between now and Monday to look at those interviews and come back. And the manager has made a recommendation of going with the number two selection. I don't know whether the board is ready to do that tonight or not. I think I would feel more comfortable if I had time to look at the interviews.
Well, I, you know, I'd like to address this a little bit too, because I guess I'm going to have a little different viewpoint from you. So, before you get too far down the road, I have looked at the various live stream projects, and as you note, the town manager did recommend that we go ahead with Steve Smith, who was felt at the time to be the second choice. And, you know, as I went through the various live streams, and I heard these folks, you know, it really boils down to, you know, any one of these people is truly going to be qualified to come up to design a seven thousand, eight thousand foot library for the town of Rockport. They're all qualified. And again, we can spend week after week talking about what we saw in the video, you know, who we thought did a better job, who we didn't. And I think, again, it's just going to slow the process down without a lot of value added. And having watched the live stream, I guess the one thing that impressed me in conjunction with Rick's recommendation was that at the end of Steve's video, he actually had people in the audience that were clapping. I don't think they were plants or anything, but they truly seemed excited about it. Plus, it means a lot to me that Steve has done a lot of work with Will Gartley, and I see Alan back there. I was afraid I might be trying to speak for him, but, you know, he's also, there, I guess there was, maybe Alan can fill in the details a little bit, but I guess there was a group that involved Steve and Will and Alan that was willing to put some time in and give advice. So, again, I would hate to see this, you know, dragged out for more weeks, and again, I'd be prepared to make a motion once we talk it through here a little bit.
I'd like to just mention, you know, what Rick, the manager, had written was of the six interviews, two rose very clearly to the top of the list. Dick Reed, who was selected, and Stephen Smith, who was second. And as we know, Dick Reed had bowed out. And the second portion that the manager had written is, I would recommend that you go with the next firm on the list to pick up the project, that being Steve Smith. So, I would just assume, if we can, based on the recommendation and the work done by Rick and the previous people involved, to recommend Steve if people wanted to go along with that, so that we cannot waste another week or another minute getting to this point, because we need to get going. And if he's good enough to come in second, I don't think we need to...
Well, I put a lot of weight in the manager's recommendation, to be sure, but I haven't looked at the interviews recently myself, and I feel that I would be doing a disservice to make a decision without doing that. It may very well that I, be that I come back and I make that decision, and I don't think we're looking at weeks, plural. I think I'd be prepared, after I look at things, to come back next Monday and make a decision. But I can't in good conscience make a decision without looking at those interviews again.
I haven't had a chance to look at it.
And I'll second that too, because even being part of the process, and, you know, I've come across Steve Smith a lot, he's got a good reputation, I, you know, appreciate the town manager's recommendation, but if I vote tonight for an architect, and then tomorrow, someone stops me at the grocery store and says, why'd you vote for that architect? I'm going to go, well, they were number two, and it was recommended, and that's not how, I'm just not comfortable with that.
Owen, in all likelihood, that will happen anyway.
Yeah.
We just have to make a decision and do something.
Exactly.
No, I want to at least be able to say, I have met with Steve Smith, we asked...
Were you part of this prior discussion with architects?
I was not part of the interview, that was on the building committee.
We were.
I was not part of the interview, that was on the building committee.
Yeah, the library planning committee did all the interviewing.
Again, it was one of those, the select board had kind of stepped back a little bit and was trusting in this fine group of people we had put together, and I really trust their ranking of it, but not having sat down and discussed this with this architect specifically, I just, I want to be able to at least say...
So you trust him, but you don't? You trust in their opinion, but you want to...
You trust and verify. Trust and verify.
You know, I know, I know.
What do you guys think?
Well, I was on the ad hoc library committee, and, building committee, excuse me, I get my committees mixed up. You know, personally, I think the presentation by Steve Smith was good. Obviously, he did come in second in terms of, you know, their concept, because these were all concepts. You know, we gave them, we want it here, this is the, this is the square footage that we want you to use, we want you to use your imagination and, you know, kind of come back and tell us what you think would be a good fit for Rockport. And so several of them did a very wonderful job, and Reed, because of their experience building libraries, I think that kind of helped them rise to the top. However, I think that, and it's up to you, because you're going to make this decision. If you haven't seen those presentations, you know, you can fast forward through the outside stuff and just get to the stuff that's more interesting. But the way they answered their questions, we had also part of that whole ad hoc library committee, library building, was John Schultz, and he did a tremendous job in sort of helping us ask the types of questions we needed from those architects. I mean, I feel very confident in the choices that the library building committee made, but, you know, you may want to go and see those presentations.
So what was the time difference too? I mean, it...
It was done in two days.
No, 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 between when the interviews were conducted and today. And I only bring up...
It was twenty months ago.
Yeah, and I only bring that up because a lot has transpired since we interviewed them and now.
That is correct.
I mean, a lot of things are still the same, but...
Well, you're going to be looking at interviews that are twenty months old.
And for a different...
And I would just, and I just, I would note that we had selected an architect, and because of how things transpired over those twenty months, that architect chose to no longer be part of our project. So I would just love to hear, as a person who has observed this and a professional architect, what, are you, are you willing to enter into this rodeo?
And I hadn't gotten to the point of saying that we are going to vote to take him. We should approach him and see if he wants to.
Oh, for sure.
Well, we know, we know that the four that are on the thing... Yes. So the answer to that question is, those four have all expressed interest. They're aware of what's going on, especially Steve and John, I'm sure. And I know Steve, I like Steve, I think he could do a tremendous job, but I have to look at the interviews before I can vote.
It is only, what is it, four or five more days?
Yeah, I think it's, you know, we, I think we can do it fairly quickly. I feel, you know, that unless I see something horrible, I'm probably going to be okay with Steve, but I just can't do that without having looked at the interviews. I would be shirking my duty as a select board member.
Yeah. Again, this is one of those, you guys are, you're all right.
You have the advantage of having looked at them, I haven't had time yet.
I think...
And I will say, I'll interrupt you, I will say the fact that you've looked at them and endorsed them does carry some weight with me too.
Yeah. I'm glad that you all want to, you want to watch them. I think, I mean, having gone through that process, it was pretty clear who one and two were, and where the rest of the pack sat. I think you'll see that really quickly when you watch those. I mean, it was, there was a gap, there was a gap.
There was a little bubble though, that that one person, that that was kind of clever.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So I'm glad you want to watch them, that makes good governing sense to me. I would say though, you shouldn't really talk to them though, unless you're going to talk to all of them.
No, and I don't think...
Like, just only do it with the data that you've got, otherwise it's an unfair interview.
My personal opinion is, we don't need to re-interview these people. They went through a strong interview process, and I think we can get a sense from the, I mean, six hours worth of video, if we can't figure it out by that, then I think we're going to be okay. And I think, you know, if we can go through the rest of this agenda this evening, I think we can come back next Monday and make a pretty quick decision if all of us, you know, have a little discussion about what we've seen on the videos. We have Rick's recommendation, we have, you know, Anne, having gone through the process, being impressed by him. I just need to confirm, that's all. I can't vote without confirming.
So you're saying next Monday then?
Yeah.
And I totally asked at the last meeting, should I watch the videos? Are we making a decision? And I was told no.
Well, and part of the reason was that I put on the agenda the procedure.
Procedure.
And we need to, I think we need to talk, we can't talk about the procedure and then go execute the procedure in the same meeting, in my opinion.
So while we're all here, is next Monday good?
Yes.
I think so, yeah, we had a read on that last week. So, and that should be, I anticipate that that will be a fairly brief discussion, and then we can move ahead. Fundraising efforts. I know this is something that Anne, Anne helped me to develop this agenda, by the way, so this is the select board and the library committee working together, and this is something that we had talked about, thoughts about fundraising efforts and how we get that going, and when do we do it, and things of that nature.
Right, and I think we have to make sure that, you know, we're working towards a plan, so that, my feeling is that while the library committee is happy to work towards looking for, and working with Ben on looking for library grant money, that kind of thing, I don't think that really any of us have a great expertise on doing a capital campaign. And I think it would be very prudent as you are kind of formulating your plan going forward, which was the case the last time we were talking about this, that there is sort of a capital campaign committee that's put together. I know that the library committee did offer to, or we were given a request from the capital campaign chairperson or co-chairperson, on whether or not we would be able to provide some additional funding for support, staff, et cetera. And we did vote at that time, and I can't say specifically that we will do that again, but because we did it in the past, I could see that we would probably vote to support a capital campaign committee in the future.
I would like to put my friend Bill Leoni on the spot and ask him to come up to the microphone, because I know you have done a lot of fundraising over the years, both for the Y and the various people down in Massachusetts. Kind of give us your spin on how a professional fundraising can be done, if you wouldn't mind. This is not rehearsed. I saw him sitting there, and I thought, you know, this guy has done it before.
Boy, is this going to be off the cuff.
Yeah, I guess so.
Well, first of all, you have to have a product that people really want. I mean, why does somebody want to give to something they don't want? With regard to a library in a municipal building, I think it's very visual. The average donor is not really so concerned about what's inside, although programming would be important, but they visually have to see the library and be knocked out by it. I think that's one of the problems with the last library. I think the order in which that proposal went down was, number one, I think it was design, number two, I think it was price. So, I remember going to a meeting upstairs, and when the property was first presented, there was no wow factor, if you remember. People didn't come out of, stand on Union Street saying, wow, what a great project, I love that library. They just didn't. I know we talked about that afterwards, and we were quite surprised. So, you have to have a very good product. Secondly, I think the location of One Lime Rock Street is going to be very helpful in getting donors to embrace the project. I just think it pulls the village together, and it makes sense. I think it's something that's very easy to sell. The other thing is that it's a one-time affair. It's very hard to do fundraising every year. Every single year, you have to go out and talk to the same people and ask them for money. When you have a new project, you have got the enthusiasm of, I'm going to ask you once for it, and I'm going to ask you for as much as you can give me, and I'm going to ask you to maybe give it to me over several years, so that it's not so painful. So these are, this is something you have to think about also. I think you need to have a professional fundraiser, who can keep those that are on the fundraising committee directed towards their jobs. I know I was involved in a project where we had six weeks to raise three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We hired a fundraiser, we paid twenty thousand dollars for him to help us, and we met once a week, and he made us work. We had to come in and explain who we had seen, and what the prospects were, what the amount of money we had discussed, or we discussed how much this fellow and this fellow and this fellow are capable of donating. I'm not a professional fundraiser, but this is what we did. And we did meet the goal. So I think that you have to have, sadly, in this community, we don't have Charlie Colly anymore, and we don't have Harvey Picker, who wrote the checks for the Camden Library. We do have some very substantial people in town, and we need to cultivate them, and, you know, that's how it's going to happen. You'll get lots of hundred dollar donations and five hundred and one thousand, but what you need is fifty thousand and hundred thousand and half million dollar donations to make, to get to a million and a half dollars. You know, it, you can't do it unless you have some very, very big, big numbers. And I think Pat might, might know a little bit about that as well. Does what I'm saying make any sense, Pat?
I agree with everything you said, absolutely. Starting with the most important thing is you have to have a product.
Product.
To go out and sell to people. Because you can't just say, would you like to give us some money?
So we have to, we have to pass the bond first.
But I will say that...
Pat, could you come up? Thank you.
No, I think everything you said is absolutely on target.
On target?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it's going to, what people don't realize is it costs money to raise money, but that's the reality of fundraising, is it, you have to hire a professional, you're going to have to do a lot of work, it's going to take time.
Yeah, and the bigger the committee is, the more success you'll have. I mean, you have a hundred people or more on your committee.
No, we didn't really, we had a tentative committee.
No, I don't mean that, but I mean in the friends of the library.
Oh. We have, we have about a hundred and fifty... We have, we have about 150 people who are, have signed on to be friends.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I don't know whether those are the people that are going to be giving $100,000.
No, 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 they're not going to give money, but they can ask.
Well, yeah, I don't know.
You know, I, I mean, every hundred dollar donation adds up, so everything's important. But it's important to have it very well organized and have a, a professional involved in it, I think.
Yeah.
Did we not have professional involvement last time around?
We didn't get to that point, it was just.
We had a, a, two co-chairs, I believe, who were Charlton Ames and.
John Welsh.
John Welsh. And Cheryl Lickety was involved as well. And they had, they had started to do some preliminary work and they had put together a job description, which the, the library committee was going to fund and they had advertised for that. And that was going to go forward if the bond had passed. If the bond didn't pass.
And I'll say basically, they all said identical things to what you both have said when they came and presented, almost identical.
Yeah, I was part of that committee.
Are those people relatively easy to come by, professional fundraisers? Or do you have to cast the wide net?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think.
You want to get the right person for your community and for your.
And the, and the fund, the professional fundraiser is not going out to ask for the money.
That's right.
They're organizing. They're whipping the, whipping the troops into shape, basically.
That's the big difference. I mean, the fundraiser, the, the professional fundraiser is really the guy who does have the whip. And he, he, you know, I suspect that these guys can also be paid by their success rate. Maybe they work on a.
A lot of them are as a percentage, yeah.
Partial commission or something like that. So, yeah, I think, you know, and it's not too, too, too soon to start thinking about that.
I mean, the other thing, you, you do need to have the product if you're going out for grant money, you know? And I talked about working with Jamie Franco Mano in case he had some other municipal grant money that he could, you know, connect us up with in terms of helping us write a really good grant, you know? Working with Ben. So I think those are all things that the library committee can, can help with as well.
Okay. I mean, we just have to pass the bond before we can do this. All the work we were doing before was so that we could hit the ground running. As soon as the grant got passed, then we start fundraising. Because the bond won't get released till we raise all the funds, which means we don't start breaking ground until then. So that was the idea behind.
I'm perfectly willing to ask Charlton again if he would like to, to help us with.
That was actually going to be my question to Anne. I don't know if you, I just haven't run across some of those former fundraising members. What's your sense of their excitement around coming on again? Or are we looking for a new group of people?
I haven't, I haven't.
Because I, I want to incorporate all the other folks, but I'm just, with the folks that we had already had and the plans that they had already kind of worked up, is that forward progress? We can build on and incorporate new folks into that overall?
Possibly, I think it's, it's worth a, a shout out.
Okay.
And the one thing to keep in mind too, and I don't know if I'll phrase this right, so Pat may need to come back up and, and say it appropriately. But the, I don't believe the committee is sort of a town committee that raises this. Okay, just so, so everybody knows, just so that they can keep everybody's information private.
Private money, it's private money. And they're, they're going to do it, and we're going to hope that they'll work with us. But, but basically, we're looking for private money to come in.
That was almost kind of why the, the money to support them came out of the endowment, right? To try to.
The trust.
Yeah, I'm sorry, the trust. I mean, like, we, we sanctioned this group, but we weren't providing them resources to then act on it. We were engaging, but it seemed like they were kind of doing their own separate thing.
Well, I will reach out to Charlton and see if he's interested. And maybe Bill, I don't know whether you would have an interest in helping out with that. We'll, we'll, we'll beat the drums a little bit. Rich, did you have something you wanted to say?
Richard Anderson, La Branc Street in Rockport. I mean, one of the, when, five, six years ago, when this first started, I went and saw Tom Putnam, who was very, very critical to the development, the fundraising of the Rockland Library, when it was redeveloped eight, 10 years ago. And one of the points that, that Tom made when I talked to him about, how did this happen? How did you get this Rockland Library approved? And he said that a member of the building committee, the committee that you create, that's going to oversee the development of the final plan and, and what we're going to take to the, to the taxpayers, has to be a fundraising subcommittee. In other words, somebody on your building committee needs to be on your fundraising committee. Because along the way, you know, certain people with money have certain pet things. And, and that while, you, you know, you don't do something for your library just because somebody's willing to pay for it, you, you do have to take that into consideration. And so a part of that building committee, as you're planning the building, you're thinking about what you want. Do you want this thing or do you want that thing? What kind of technology? Somebody in this community may really be in tune with technology. And say, well, if you would do this technology, boy, you can have $50,000 or $100,000.
Very good point.
Just put somebody on your building committee who is involved with your fundraising effort.
Good point.
I think it's a good cross-pollinization too, because then that building committee member can basically bring everyone else up to speed about the various aspects. So when you go to the door and you make that request, you actually know what the heck you're talking about.
Okay, that's a good discussion. Last item in this section is preliminary thoughts on, I put advertising marketing efforts. It's really a citizen's information effort. And Rick, I'm going to let the delay go, because I know in the past you've talked to, to a firm in Rockland who really helped them with some, some similar effort. And I don't know whether that's something that we might want to consider and think about at budget time to get, to engage somebody professional to help us with that kind of an effort.
Yes, there is, Narrative is in, in Rockland. And they, they've worked with Rockland. There's a bunch of firms around that we could look at that, that could help with that kind of effort.
And I think just like the fundraising, I would suggest that we probably need some professional expertise with that. I think we can, we can do a lot with manpower and volunteers and things of that nature. But we really need to have somebody keep people focused on the message.
Well, you know. You can talk to, you can talk to several different agencies so you can get a, an idea of what that budget should be.
And I agree, we need a professional to do it. But I also think it can start tonight. I mean, I would hope that this group can, you know, now say we've sort of broken through to the other side. And, you know, as of tonight, we're moving ahead with a, a new Rockport library.
Well, you know, and, and in conjunction with that, and I'm sure that you may not like my proposal. I don't want to go negative. But I think that we really ought to make a decision on tearing down the old library and putting a lovely sign that says, "Future Home of the Rockport Public Library." I think it shows good faith. So I just put it out there, I think it's past time. And a lot of that interior stuff can be recycled, so I just, I just lay it out.
That is a future agenda item. No, that's a really, that's a very legitimate thing to discuss. I'm just not at a place right now to where.
No, no, I just wanted to plant a seed.
It's a good point to bring up, and I think at, at this point, if we're, if we're going to move forward and, and we're going to put forth another proposal, then perhaps we can talk about the best time to do it, when the economies of it are right and, and things of that nature, so we can.
I think Alan's still here, but I'm sure you would agree with me that, you know, the time to tear it down is the time you've got the excavators and the dozers on site, rather than turn it into two separate projects.
Well, we can talk about that at another time, but it's a, it's a point well made. Owen?
So here are my thoughts on using taxpayer money for advertising and marketing. I am not opposed to spending a modest amount of money to inform the public about the options that they have before them. But I will not in any way support using taxpayer dollars to specifically advocate for an outcome. I will not be voting to allocate any money that says, please vote yes on our library. Forming them, having them be aware of the process, but it's, it's something that I've picked up in the legislature and it's become a big pet peeve of mine, using taxpayer dollars to advocate for a specific outcome that then takes more taxpayer dollars.
I, I don't think any of us were suggesting that.
It's not, and I just wanted to throw it out there as kind of a ground rule.
I almost changed the agenda item, but Anne and I had met and she used the advertising marketing term. And I almost changed it to citizen information, citizen informing efforts. But I didn't want to, you know, because Anne and I had done that together, I didn't want to do that proactively. But I think you're absolutely right. What we need to do is make sure that citizens have the information they need to make an informed choice.
Like the survey, I was cool with the survey because it was utilizing taxpayer dollars to figure out what the taxpayers wanted us to do. The signage was, it was only in, you know, get out there and do the survey. Just do the survey and tell us what you want. That's why I was okay with that.
Is it just a money issue though? And this is, this is just a question?
It's an ethical thing.
Well, no, no. So if the money didn't come from the town or municipality and there was money for it, would you then put your name on it saying, yes, vote for this?
I would not.
Okay, so it's not just about the money?
Well, like Pat and Bill said, you know, the project has to sell itself, so.
Well, it does. I mean, there may be private citizens who decide, I love this design, I'm going to pay myself for some signs and say, vote yes on article, whatever it is at the time, for the new Rockport Public Library. And that's, that's entirely appropriate. But I do think that our efforts as a town, I think Owen is right, we can't advocate for voting. The select board can, on the, on the question, we can have a recommendation as we did on the prior questions. That's a little different.
So then, I guess my, my question to you is then, how would you campaign to try to get this passed without saying you should vote for it? I mean, because I'm going to try to get people to vote for it.
The point, it's a, I, I agree 100%. It is not appropriate for us to campaign that this pass or fail.
Okay.
It is appropriate to do exactly what Ken did, which is to inform the public of what the proposal is. And part of that proposal, as it's moving forward, will certainly be architects' drawings. It will be a vision for what the, the public is voting for, and it will be transparent. And we should put that out there in front of the public in, in every, every conceivable way.
And I want to modify a little bit, because I think it's appropriate for, if, if the, if the select board wants to make, make its position known to the public, we can do that. But spending money on a campaign, that's spending money to.
The taxpayers' money. Writing an op-ed doesn't cost us any money. A recommendation doesn't cost us any money.
We will recommend the article and we can, as a select word, if we unanimously agree on a letter to go into the newspaper, advocating for the passage of something, we can do that. That's a decision we'll have to make at the time.
And that's what you did last time, and it was just a letter.
Yep.
And it was just sort of like, hey, here's all the information. And it's like, what, we need to be excited about it, you know? You need, and I need you all to be excited about it. I need you to be telling people that it's exciting and it's a good idea and that we want to get it done. So I don't know how you can do that.
We can, we can do it. We just, it has to be, we can't expend taxpayer money.
Yeah, I totally understand that.
And I do take a little issue with the letter, because I, I remember writing that letter and I put a sentence in there saying, the select board unanimously enthusiastically supports this project. And I hear from time to time that that wasn't enough.
Well, and it still didn't get the library passed. Just going to put that out there.
But I think, I mean, I do think that your earlier comment is correct and that we need to be more involved in getting out and explaining to people what the situation is. So for example, if you're going into somebody's living room to talk about it, then call one of us. And I, anyway, if I can, if I have the time, I'll go with you.
Yeah, well, I mean, I only reach so many people. You reach a much more diverse demographic than I do.
We all have our part to play.
And we can, as, we can write individual letters as citizens and, and advocate for the project as well, so.
And the last thing I'll say on is, it's been my experience going door to door and knocking on people's doors is, when the product itself is that exciting, simply answering the questions gets people excited. I don't have to go up and say, hey, support this, and then roll into why you should support it. Answering the questions, just in, in the general demeanor, you can get people excited about things while not specifically saying, and please vote yes. And though I can, you know, potentially do that, not expending taxpayer dollars, if, if the citizens get a mailer that they know their money went to and it says, vote yes on, I just, that's, that's really concerning.
Yeah, I understand that.
Okay. Next steps, I put down here, goal for town vote.
I'd love to have it be June.
I think we ought to at least try for it.
Shooting for June.
I think so too. I think things have to go, have to go quickly and there may be some point at which we realize that it doesn't work. But I think keeping our feet to the fire and pushing for that June vote would be a good thing.
Some of the major hurdles have already been achieved, I think.
And I think we'll finish it on Monday.
No, and I think with the leadership of these guys and us, it hopefully will become much smoother.
And the worst case scenario, push it to November.
But there's a general agreement, I don't think we have to vote on it, there's a general agreement on the board that we would like to get something on for June. Okay. I don't know how much we can get into a general timeline, but certainly.
It'll depend on talking to the architect.
Yeah, we're going to have to make an architect selection, I think, or at least consider an architect selection next Monday. And then, you know, figure out where we go from there. And, but Linda will tell us, we have to have a ballot question ready by sort of the end of, end of March, I think. You know, the end of March, we have to have the ballot question ready to go. So that sort of dictates our timeline.
You got to get me an architect.
If the architect, if we select the architect next week, then, you know, you know, Ben and Ben can make some, and, and the select board too can make some preliminary work perhaps before the holidays and then hit the ground running. And we've got basically January, February to, to come up with a plan and then, and then.
Do it.
Get the ballot question going and, and then get it out to the public. Let, we need to have some public input as well, I think, through the process.
Yeah.
And so I think it's doable, but, but we.
Do we have any sort of like timeline regression thing where the June vote and then the, the time before that is when we have to set the warrant? And then what's the next step? You know, you, you start at the vote and you work your way back to where you are today.
To an extent, we have to have the, the question ready to go to the printers by the end of March. Now, the question ready to go to the printer is going to be fairly simple. It's going to be, do you approve of, you know, a bond for the Rockport Public Library? An amount of 1.5 million dollars to be matched by 1.5 million dollars of public funds? It would be nice when we have that ready if we, if we're pretty far along. But we do have a little bit of wiggle room, maybe to stretch another couple of weeks as far as getting the final drawings out there. But with the vote in June, we don't want to be handing the drawings out to the public a week before the vote. We want time for them to have that. So I think it would behoove us to have everything wrapped up end of March, early April at the very latest, as far as the design is concerned.
I mean, I, if the architect's willing to spend as much time with me as, as we need and you're all willing to meet and be as fleet as possible, we can do it. We can definitely do it. I mean, it's going to take work.